I advise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an empty republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal legal, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. Just a reminder, if you haven't, to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly. And if you need hearing devices, Robert would be able to help you with that. With that, we'll start with routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any corrections, changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of December 10th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $549,230.86.
Paid bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second and three-thirds, I think. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
Today's bills include $115,000 to Correct Care Solutions.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills as printed. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. The following reports have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. The Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for November 2013. The auditor's account with the county treasurer as of November 30th, 2013. The East Dakota Water Development District financial statement for December 31st, 2012. The Register of Deeds official statement of revenue report for November 2013. And the general fund surplus analysis as of September 30th, 2013. Item five are personnel actions. Item A is to approve the routine actions.
I'll move routine action.
Second.
Any questions about routine action? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
And item B is consider a motion to approve special personnel actions. The first item is to approve a temporary salary increase for Josh Helman, GIS analyst of approximately 5% due to additional duties. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The first item is just a salary increase to cover an individual who's going in for another one who is out on leave. The timeframe for that would be the period of time the individual was out on leave.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other questions for Carrie? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the temporary salary increase. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
The second item is to approve an extension of the temporary salary increase for Carol Muller, the Human Services Director of approximately 5% due to additional duties. Carrie Dever.
And this one is for detox responsibilities. It's been ongoing for over six months now. We'd like that extended until those responsibilities end.
Very good. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Continue the extension, if you will, or salary increase for Carol. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
And item C is a briefing from Minnehaw County Compensation Study Consultants.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you today Elliot Sussels and Andrew Knutson from Segal Consulting. As you know, we've gone out for an RFP to conduct a compensation study to reevaluate our salary ranges and the method in which we progress employees through that. And Elliot and Andrew are going to give you an overview of that. I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here this morning to provide you with an initial overview, a brief briefing with respect to the compensation study. As Carrie Dever indicated, joining me today is Andrew Knutson. And both Andrew and I will be working with the county on this subject. Okay, thanks. Sorry. What I thought we'd start out with is just to, an overview of the project objectives and then take a little bit of a dive into the approach that we're going to take. There are three project objectives that have been articulated to us. The first of which is to assist you, the county commission, with regard to developing options for compensating staff in accordance with a pay philosophy that meets the needs of the county. And we'll talk about what we mean by pay philosophy and certainly are very interested in your perspective on that. Key to any study such as this is answering or addressing the county's ability to attract and retain and motivate employees. We recognize that as we go through this discussion, both with you and with staff, that there may be different needs in different departments, different employees, issues with regard to attracting and retaining those employees. The other thing that we want to look to is to develop policies and guidelines that in the long run allow the county to continue to be able to compete in the labor market and to adjust to those market changes as they occur, whatever they may be. As a former public sector budget official, I can tell you that one of the things that I am very mindful of in working with our clients and certainly working with the county is to look at the affordability of any changes to the compensation system and how any recommendations that may come out of this may be married with the fiscal resources that you may or may not have available and to look at that over some period of time. With respect to the detailed approach, there's really five major steps that we will be going through in this project, has a fairly quick timeline, which we'll discuss in a minute. We are obviously at the first stage now in terms of what we call orientation review of the current system and the pay philosophy. And we have already started meeting with department heads both yesterday and continuing today to get their input with respect to challenges that they may be seeing recruiting and retaining certain job classes in terms of getting their perspective in terms of the strengths and weaknesses of the current compensation system and perhaps opportunities for change. The real bulk of the data gathering that we will be pursuing very quickly is a custom market study that will be going out to a set of peer employers. We've received some input from department heads with respect to who those peer employers might be. We certainly are interested in your perspective on who those peer employers might be because that sets the tone both for the study and in the long run with regard to who the county perceives it competes against for talent. And that may differ depending upon department, and we recognize that. The survey is a total compensation survey, so it is not just pay, but it's pay and benefits. It will cover approximately 75 benchmark or representative titles. That is something that we'll be working through in the next week or so in terms of how do we identify those job titles that represent the broad array of services provided by county employees and that we can get consistent market data in terms of understanding the nature of the work and how is that work compensated in other areas. So that is, if you will, a data gathering, fact-finding phase of the project. Out of that comes recommendations with regard to several things. One is the appropriateness of the salary structure, the salary ranges for particular jobs. Be mindful of this in the context of the cost of total compensation. And our ultimate report will be looking at the competitiveness from a total compensation basis for these benchmark jobs and by extension for jobs across the county. We will then develop a report defining the methodology, the observations from the data, our recommendations. And we like to do that consistent with some notion of a compensation philosophy, which again, if you bear with me a slide or two, I'll talk about in a few moments, with the outcome being to provide support to the county in terms of implementation of any changes that you deem appropriate and affordable as the process goes on. I indicated the process is, project is fairly quick. It has started. We obviously have the holidays intervening, but the objective is to have this completed by the end of March. It is a fairly aggressive timeline, but one that we think is doable, given the resources both on our side and the resources available on the county's side to work together in partnership. In terms of anticipated outcomes, I think there are, we think that there are four or five of them. One is to make sure that the salary structure is competitive. And when we talk about competitive, we mean not only just the salary ranges, the dollar values, but certainly addressing issues of what we would call pay delivery. How do people move through the ranges? What determines that? We want to be sure that there is both internal equity and external equity and competitiveness in the system that's developed. And we will make recommendations with regard to certain jobs or certain groups of jobs that the market may indicate are either overvalued or undervalued and recommendations as to what should be done with that. We also want to provide the county with updated policies in terms of administering the compensation system and the ability to monitor the market in the future. So one of the tools that Segal provides to all of our clients is not only just the raw data, but an actual database so that if the county wants to replicate the study two years, three years from now, the county would have all the tools available if it so chose to do it themselves and to have a repository for what we would call time series data to see how the market has changed over time. So those are the anticipated outcomes as we see them today. I talked a little bit about compensation philosophy. And compensation philosophy is not some ethereal thing. It really is what supports the county's or any employer's ability to recruit and retain employees. And we look at this from the slide that's up in terms of what we call a rewards of work model. We certainly know that pay is important. We certainly know that benefits are important. But that's not the only thing that causes folks to work for the county or work in public service, which is the area that we specialize in. And so other areas that differentiate you as an employer to attract and retain is work content, is career advancement, is affiliation, the fact that folks support the mission of the county, that support the notion of public service. And it's really those combination of things, not just pay alone and not just benefits in conjunction with pay that serve as the foundation for a public sector certainly pay philosophy. Now, what's important in understanding this is your compensation philosophy is really what's going to support the county's ability to recruit and retain. And there are several components of any total compensation philosophy, and you see them here, which, one is clearly, how does it support the strategic objectives of the county? How does it support the ability to deliver the, to have the human capital to deliver the services that are important to your constituents? It includes a definition of who do you compare yourselves to. So when I say one of the early things we're doing is trying to determine who are the entities, the employers, for which the county competes for talent. That is a foundational issue. Where does the county want to be in the marketplace? So if we have an array of employers, does the county want to position itself as at the average or 50th percentile, to get a little statistical of the marketplace, or does it want to be at some other market position? That's foundational in the compensation philosophy. What's the importance of the mix of pay and benefits? We certainly know in the public sector historically benefits have been relatively generous, and that sometimes balances the pay, the competitiveness of pay. So we look at this holistically. In terms of performance and defining performance and measuring performance, what's the role that you want to see of performance in terms of how pay is delivered? Right now, you have an 18-step pay system. Steps are advanced, assuming satisfactory performance, but there are other ways of delivering pay. And so the compensation philosophy determines not only who do you compare yourselves to, where you want to be in the market, what's the importance of the mix of pay and benefits, but also what's the reward system? What's the model that the county wants to communicate to its workforce in terms of, if you will, the agreement in terms of what do I have to do and in return, what can I expect from the county in terms of career advancement, in terms of enhanced career earnings and so forth? Issues of governance and decision-making. What is the role of human resources in terms of monitoring the system and managing it over time? And lastly, and perhaps most important, is this issue of communication. How is the whole compensation system communicated to the workforce that they really value the dollars that you are spending on the workforce? Those are the issues that in a brief period of three or four months, we really do have to address, and some of them sooner than others. So the issue of peer organizations is pretty critical, given the timeline for the project. Again, we have received input from department heads on that, certainly interested in your perspective. And so with that, I'm happy to address any questions that you may have about the project.
Do you have any questions for Elliot or Andrew at this point? Commissioner Barth?
You know, as I retired from the telephone company, a company which had benefits and, you know, most private sector businesses these days really don't have a defined pension, et cetera, yet government still does. Isn't that a huge incentive? You know, as a worker for 30 years at the phone company, I didn't even realize how generous those benefits were until I left. And I don't know if our employees know how good these benefits will be. But isn't that a huge factor? I mean, maybe number one or number two for many people on how they decide to work here.
You know, Commissioner Barth, I think you're right. I think that people value retirement benefits in general as they proceed along in their careers in life. I suspect that folks, and I don't want to make a broad statement, but, you know, folks earlier on their career are perhaps more focused on money in their paycheck, obviously starting families or paying off student loans or whatever the case may be. But that as you progress, I think as we've all progressed and to your point, you suddenly realize the value of these things. Certainly, defined benefit retirement plans are incredibly valuable, particularly as incentive for long-term employees. They speak to a piece of a compensation philosophy in terms of focus on income replacement at retirement and the philosophy, the commitment of the employer, of the county, to that end. We certainly, as we go through the study, as you said, we'll be doing total compensation. So we will be looking at both the prevalence of defined benefit retirement among the peer employers that we'll be looking at, as well as the cost. Certainly, those costs vary. I don't want to get too actuarial here today, but those costs on defined benefit vary depending upon how well employers have funded those systems over a long period of time relative to a variety of other factors. But it certainly is a tool to retain people. No question about that.
Other questions? Commissioner Beckus?
Well, you just touched on the interesting point. I think it's the corollary of what Mr. Barth was bringing up, is the fact that long-term investment. You know, if you're going to go out and look at our external references to go ahead and compare apples to apples, you have to be very mindful that if you have some, you know, local governmental entities or state entities that haven't funded that pension, but yet these employees have expected it to be there, but it's no longer there when they retire, I think obviously there's a bait and switch aspect to that. And I caution you to compare, obviously, to one of these other external entities that didn't really fund their pension because that's somewhat of a bait and switch, as far as I'm concerned. And also, external, local entities that obviously would have, for example, a state income tax. Because when you're looking at, obviously, pay, if you're having to pay a state income tax, which South Dakota doesn't have, that could artificially inflate the amount of dollars going into potential pay. But I know you'll take that into consideration.
No, no, absolutely, Commissioner Beckus. I think that we will endeavor to create as level a playing field in our comparisons as possible. Again, yes, there are entities that haven't funded it and have therefore enormous current costs, but there's also on an actuarial basis, something we call the normal cost, which is what would be the funding stream if I started working for the county today that would be required to fund my pension over 25, 30 years, as the case may be. So we're mindful of those elements that might skew results and do our best to strip those out.
You're not going to rush out and compare us to Detroit.
No, no, we're not going to rush you out to compare you to Detroit. I promise that. Anything else I can help you with today?
Any other questions of Elliot?
This kind of a question, contract, but the previous study we did, I don't know what was it, almost 10 years ago or eight years ago? I know Carrie has referred to them on a lot of, when we have a question here of pay or position, she goes back to them. Is that same follow-up going to occur with you folks as far as, and Carrie, I think you understand maybe what I'm talking about, but are you in this for just the study or are you in this for the long haul?
We're in this for, I guess everybody's definition of the long haul is different, but we like to see our, we like to see our work, our recommendations taken into consideration. We recognize that all our recommendations may not be implemented for a variety of reasons, including fiscal, which I'm very sensitive to, but we're not going away. We've been around since 1939 and have incredibly long relationships with our clients.
So if we have a question on a particular person or a particular position
Yeah.
that we will be able to call you and say, how does this fit into what we've set up?
Sure. Happy to do that. Yes, happy to do that.
Any other questions? Carrie, do you have a comment?
Just one thing that I'd like to talk a little bit about. Do you have input for Elliot and Andrew? Before we let them off the hook too quickly, do you have input for either Andrew or Elliot on your own perspectives about organizations that you feel that we compete with that need to be taken into consideration during this study? And what I'm thinking about is we had a lot of debate during the last study about, do we include private? Do we include public? And the perspective actually flip-flopped between the beginning of that study and the end of the study. I'm just wondering if you have any organizations that you feel strongly that be included? Obviously, Elliot and Andrew are working hard with department heads to get a good broad base of those, and we can collect that data and make later determinations as well, but if you have input upfront.
Commissioner Beckus?
Well, I can touch on that a little bit. Carrie brought up the fact that originally, you know, we wanted the market, I'm glad Bob Colby's here because he was also present during this situation. But a lot of times when we looked at this, we wanted absolute market-to-market comparison. But in the reality of the circumstance, what do you do if your salary study comes back and you find out that your state's attorney is going to be receiving a substantial amount of money that would be more pay than the Supreme Court Justice, than the Attorney General of South Dakota? These are some of the concepts that we actually looked at because in a market-to-market comparison, truly, they should be paid for what they're absolutely going to be worth. But in the reality of what is South Dakota, unfortunately, what do you do if you have a circumstance where, seven years ago, we had a circumstance where we had the superintendent of schools in Sioux Falls get potential pay that was substantially higher than the Secretary of Education for South Dakota? And that actually created a dilemma with the state of South Dakota because Rick Melmer threw his hat in the ring to go ahead and apply for a job with the school district. And so we didn't want to get crossways with the state and our other partners in government. So that was one of our concerns.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, you mentioned, one of the questions that I gathered, you're asking of the commission is where we want to be, you know, do we want to be in the mid? Do we want to be in the higher end, lower end? I mean, is this one you want to talk, that are you going to talk individually to us to see how, where we are, or do you already know where we want to position ourselves in the pay?
Well, I think we would enjoy having the opportunity to talking with you, each of you, in a little bit more in-depth as we proceed. Obviously, this is a quick timeline, so we'll work with your schedule to make that happen. I don't think we are going to make a recommendation as to you should be at the 75th percentile or at the 50th percentile.
No, I wasn't referring to that. Because that's kind of our call as to where we want to be.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. But we would certainly enjoy having the opportunity to talk with each of you, to get your perspectives on that.
How do you, if no one else has any questions? How do you weigh the marketability issues when in fact you have some companies in the community or in the area that are blue-chip companies who are having record years and they're giving bonuses and making enhancements to their staff versus frankly, you got other companies who are going bankrupt? How do you market or label that market so that in fact you understand both ends of the spectrum and so you're quote "competitive" with private industry?
Well, let me comment that I think that that varies depending upon the job functions we're talking about. So there are clearly some job functions that I think we would all agree are fundamentally public sector job functions. You wouldn't find them in other places for a large part. I think that there are, even within that, there are job functions that you might see in the private sector, but folks who serve in the public sector tend to do that in the public sector as part of their career, so that we would focus there. I think we're looking at base pay, okay? So the issue becomes, and I say, talk about this with clients all over the country, the issue becomes the ability or willingness to think a little bit long-term in terms of looking at the workforce and the potential workforce turnovers, those of us who are baby boomers perhaps, move on to other endeavors, and making sure that the county is in the position to compete, to replace that workforce, no different than the city, no different than the state, no different than the private sector. I think we're all going to be looking at that same tension in terms of competitiveness of pay. But I think the answer is we're looking at base pay and the private sector will come into play for those jobs where there is an analog in the private sector and quite frankly, where there is sufficient data available to do that. There's certain, obviously, legal and proprietary concerns and private sector sharing data that we have to be respectful of.
Other questions? We look forward to hearing from you again through the process, and I think that we all like to have some input into the process as you're moving along. Please feel free to contact any one of us at any time. And at some point, we'll look for kind of a status update.
Absolutely. Thanks for your time.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
There are no application for abatements today. The next item is notice and requests. Item A is consider the following requests related to the 2013 Budget Supplement Actions. The first item is to consider a motion to approve a request from the Sheriff's Department, the jail, facilities, public defender and auditor's office to utilize personnel service savings for the 2013 budget expenses. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we are wrapping up the end of the year, and according to state laws, you know, we cannot end the year in any department with a negative in that as we go through and end the year. Now, you do have a specific county policy that says that departments wishing to use savings that they might see in their personnel side to offset expenses in their operational side require specific approval from the county commission. And this is something that is quite advisable to do because in many instances, the departments can meet their 2013 total budget goals without the need for a supplement if they are allowed to take advantage of that provision of utilizing personnel savings to meet operational costs. And in this year, we have five departments that find themselves in that position. And all five departments are here in that if you have questions of them. Those are the auditor, facilities, public defender, sheriff and the jail. Now, I do need to preface my comments in that on this by saying, for the, excuse me, facilities and the sheriff's department, if you allow them to use their personnel savings to offset operational costs, and this will be related to an item that you'll see next about budget supplements, they will be able to much reduce their request for a budget supplement on the next item on the agenda. supplement on the next item on the agenda, if you allow them to do that. And I would encourage you because again, we're able to do this if they utilize the personnel savings, they can meet their 2013 budget as you've approved them in total with the exception of those two that I just mentioned and we can discuss those in more detail when we get to the next item. To preface the next item, I just want to make sure that you understand that request for supplement and the post-notice of hearing will be in the amount of $419,000, or excuse me, $416,000, slightly over that. The one thing I want to remind you however, as we take a look at our year-end numbers and where we think we're going to end the year, you have more than enough money within the 2013 total budget allocation for the general fund to meet this request for supplement. And why I say that is that it should have no impact on the cash that you apply or will need to come up with in your general fund cash balance. The supplement this year because of savings we have in other departments will really be an accounting measure that we need to do to make sure that we don't end the year in any department over. And so, and again, this is, the second action is just to post the notice of hearing where we'll have the departments who've requested those supplements come in on the 31st to answer any questions that you might have. But again, I want to remind you that these requests will come in as, you know, within the 2013 total budget that you've approved and should not have an impact on our cash balance. That's also important for you to keep in mind as you consider agenda item number 10 because that was a specific question that you had asked about the last time you were here. And so, I want to thank Darlene and the auditor staff for doing some number crunching, you know, as we end the year so that we could quote bring you hopefully this good news. And that, so what you have today, the first action is we have those five departments that would need a specific authorization to use personnel savings to offset their operational budget and with the exception of the sheriff, which is primarily due, which is all due to detox and then some of the costs that we've had to bear in detox with the additional staff over there and facilities. And that, so with that, I, if you have any questions of those five departments, we can deal with that and then move into the post-notice of hearing.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone have any questions for Ken or for the department heads?
Mr. Chairman, do we just need a motion then to approve the one request and then a second motion to publish on the second request?
That would be correct.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the request from the sheriff, jail, facilities, public defender and auditor's office to utilize personnel service savings from the 2013 budget.
That's public advocate, not public.
Sorry.
Was it public defender?
It's public defender. I'll second the motion.
PDO, okay, okay.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments at this point? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. We'll go to the next step.
And the next step then commissioners is to authorize the notice to publish hearing of the budget supplement request for the general fund and we do have in your packets a copy of what that notice looks like. Again, on the general fund, you would be supplementing, the request is to supplement a total of $416,780. And again, I will remind you that as we look at the year-end books and closing, this would be within your total budget allocation for 2013. The second thing that's on the notice to supplement is from the highway fund itself to highway construction and that would be a total supplement request of 169,669. And so, if you authorize this post-notice of hearing, that will take place at 9:15 on December 31st, 2013. I also want to just remind you that between on the 24th and the 31st, on the 24th, we may bring you some motions to supplement that are passed through funds for grants and other reimbursements as we need to, to close out the books, but that's already money that's in and we just need to have a record of the receipt and the expenditure. And then secondly, on the 31st, we do withhold the commissioner's contingency fund for anything that might come up that we didn't anticipate or didn't count on and that that's something that you can use for a motion only, just so that you know that those will be coming.
Thank you. Any other comments about posting the notice?
I make a motion to authorize the auditor to post notices hearing and these supplements.
Second?
A motion and a second, excuse me, to post the notice.
I would just ask a question of Ken here. Mr. McFarland, you know, the court's supplement of $225,000 is certainly a significant number, but that's actually less than our supplement last year and-
It is.
And in my seven years, it seems like it's always a couple hundred thousand.
It is. And that last year, the supplement request was I believe $258,000, very close to that and this year, the request is coming in at 225. And again, the good news this year is that with these supplements, because of savings in other areas and other departments and when we take a look at the total county budget as a whole, these supplements are within the total allocation for 2013.
I think, Sheriff, would you like to say something?
If you let me.
You're the one that has the gun.
I don't have a bullet, but I-
If you go over your budget, we'll give you one.
Morning commissioners, I just would like to just point out one thing because there was a lot of hard work, I think, from staff and everything. I would be coming into you today with a projected surplus in the sheriff's office and jail budget of over $300,000. But unfortunately, the detox that I don't operate rests within my budget and they are $347,000 in the hole. So, $65,000 supplement request that we're going to make all comes from that 350, almost $350,000 overage with detox. So, I, you know, they, we worked hard to keep our numbers in line and I would have looked forward to coming to you and not asking for a supplement and putting all that surplus forward, but unfortunately, it happens to sit there because we didn't want to consider detox an outside agency. I think Commissioner Pecus recalls when we moved it into the budget just to have a place so that it was in a budget and I was the recipient, so.
Victim.
Thank you. Any questions of the sheriff? I think we all are very appreciative of everyone's efforts to try to keep the budget in line. If you add up all the numbers and you frankly put detox out on a limb by itself, so to speak, 75% of our overage is because of public safety issues right from the court, right down through the process of the jail, detox, state's attorneys, public advocate, everything is kind of tied to public safety, which has gotten to be another and continues to be the most rapidly growing part of our budget and it's something we have very little control over frankly.
Well, once again, you know, and you pointed it out too, Commissioner Benega, that our departments that have really performed admirably and that through this year and that we're able to come in at this year-end with these kind of need to shift some funds around because of some of the hard work that our departments have done and then again, we will go, this is within the total budget allocation of 2013. So, our department heads have done some great work.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I just basically want to say the same thing you did, a thank you to our department heads for being responsible and conservative and making the end of the year less stressful for the commission and also for their own departments. It just makes us all go out at the end of the year of 2013 feeling comfortable and not going into 2014 already feeling like we have issues going forward. And so, it really has been a nice couple of years as we continue to march forward to trying to make ourselves more stable. So, thank you.
Commissioner?
Well, just a couple of comments. One, we're going to stay within our total budget, which I think is really important and, you know, you can't guess everything down to the nickel, so the fact that we were able to stay where we were, you know, you look at the sheriff's office and, you know, that return to general fund would have been awesome and you really didn't have much control for what happened. Hope that that'll go away. The other is that I think with the courts, I mean, we've faced about three years now of 200,000-plus supplements to the courts and they've come in with their best guess. I know that Carl and Judge Long have been working on a lot of ideas to reduce some of their costs, their, the court-appointed attorneys and their interpreter costs are eating them alive. And so, I would hope that maybe in January or something, before we get into our next budget year discussions, that we would have the courts come in and tell us what they're trying to do to alleviate the situation somewhat. I guess it's probably more up to you Cindy than any of it, but I would just hope that we get a thorough briefing when they've got time to really sit and talk to us and they're competing with so many other issues like we are today.
Any other comments? Again, thank you for everybody's support in this and Darlene, I hope you don't sue us for abuse and neglect. Frankly, you put a lot of effort in this budget and in trying to solve it at the end of the year for us and make projections, Ken, obviously, and you Robert also do the same thing. You know, with the total amount that we're looking at, that's less than 1/10th of 1% of our total budget dollar amount and I think that's pretty accurate budgeting from a total county process. Everybody needs to be congratulated for getting that done, so thank you. With that, I think we have a motion and a second to publish. Any other comments? Any department heads like to make a comment? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, motion unanimously passes.
Item B under notices and requests is to authorize a county auditor to publish a request for proposals for Realtor services for the sale of Minnehaha County-owned property. Bill Hoskins.
Morning Commissioner, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sioux Land Heritage Museum. This is a request really pursuant to the supplemental agreement entered into between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County on January 26th, dealing with the museum collection storage. And in that proposal, it really mandates a sale of 19.97 acres of the 25 acres given for that purpose by Bob and Kari Hall. And this is a authorized, asking for proposals for realty services and the sale of that property.
Thank you, Bill. Any one have any questions of Bill? I think we all have been involved in this for a long time so we know the process.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
A motion and a second to authorize the auditor to publish for Realtor services. Any other comments, questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And the last notice was received from the East Dakota Water Development of a meeting at 1:00 PM Thursday, December 19th at the EDWDD office, 132B Airport Avenue in Brook County, South Dakota. There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you Cindy. This is on DPNO number 2501 in the amount of $9,914.24. And the attorney for the applicant has requested a compromise of lien in the amount of, I believe it was $3,000, 30% of the lien balance and I believe the amount owed is $9,914.24. There is a personal injury involved in this case. It's been ongoing since 2006. It is now time to actually settle the particular lawsuit and in searching for the particular liens on this particular individual, there appears to be liens going all the way back from 1978 to current for a court-appointed attorney, public defender and poor relief services. And of course, in this particular instance, the applicant has made modest but somewhat consistent partial payments towards getting these liens reduced. The commission acceptance of this particular application appears to be the only foreseeable way the county has any opportunity to collect on any portion on this particular lien. There was a serious back injury resulting from an injury that occurred with medical bills totaling over $285,000. A single creditor is owed over $180,000. This individual has assets of $1,700. There are approximately $75,000 total expected in settlement of the, of this particular claim. Of course, the vast majority of those would go to the other creditors as well as Minnehaw County. So, if the county does decline this request, the attorney indicates that the client will actually receive no proceeds and he has no reason to settle the claim, so theoretically, we may not get anything out of the case because they'd have to litigate. And of course, that is speculative. Giving in this particular instance, I'll make the motion to go ahead and do authorize in this particular instance to go ahead and to accept the $3,000 in lieu of the rest of the lien just because, for lack of a better term, the bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. So, I'll make the motion for $3,000.
Second? A motion and a second. Is the applicant here or is representative? No? Okay. Other comments or questions for Commissioner Pecus?
Mr. Chairman, I would just paraphrase John and say $3,000 in the hand is better than $9,000 in the clouds.
Well said.
Other comments? We have a motion and a second to submit the compromise, if you will, for $3,000. Any comments? I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
And Benega?
Yes. Thank you, John. I want to go to the next.
Yes, sir. Next is on DPNO number 44343 in the amount of $2,391.60. I understand the applicant is present, she can address the commission, she doesn't have to identify her name, she can address the commission where she's seated, she doesn't have to come to the podium, but we do afford the opportunity of people that do come to the commission regarding these compromises of liens to address the commission personally. And so, she is more than welcome to do so. But in putting together the particular facts of this particular application, the commission office received this request, it's in the amount of $2,391.60. The lien is both for the applicant and her ex-husband. It is for public defender services and for rental assistance between 2000 and 2010. The applicant is currently requesting the compromise in preparation for the closing of a home and she wishes to close on that home December 27th of 2013. The couple was actually married back in 1995, they were divorced in 2006. The lien records indicate all but one of the charges were incurred by the applicant's ex-husband or his minor children from a previous marriage after both she and he were divorced. The only expense incurred at the time of the marriage was a $275 payment for rental assistance provided back in 2000. And once again, human services appeared to indicates that the applicant requested assistance and both she and her ex-husband were in the process of separating at the time, which is not uncommon. The applicant requests a compromise for lien in full as it replies, or as it applies to her upon payment of half, $275, that would be $137.50, so it would be half incurred during the time of the marriage and of course, the rest of the lien balance, the $2,254.10 would then be resting against her ex-husband. And we do not have a copy of the divorce decree, but according to the attested to statement under oath, it apparently indicates that all the debts in his name, he is responsible for. So, going with the attested filing with the commission office, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Thank you, John. We have a motion and a second. We do have a copy from the clerk of the divorce decree. John, do you want to just take a peek at that or not?
Well, I got, I see it's a filing of the, what was filed, but I'll go ahead and look over your shoulder if that's okay. Oh, okay. I actually didn't- I actually didn't get this.
Anyone have any questions of John? Again, as John suggested, we do not need to identify the applicant or any of their representatives. They can say where they're at. If they'd like to make comments, if they don't want to make comments, that is certainly acceptable. And we do have a motion and a second to accept the compromise. I'll let John have a couple minutes just for the clarification on the divorce decree.
Wish it were numbered. Yeah, it's actually listed on page, page three, I believe. It isn't a numbered paragraph, but it's the second, second paragraph for the bottom. Thank you, Commissioner.
By having two attorneys look at that, we just spent that 135 bucks. Any other questions? If not, again, I would like to have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pecus?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes. Compromise completed. Merry Christmas. We'll go to the next item, which is the opportunity for a public comment. If anyone likes to make a public comment about something that's not on the agenda, we would be happy to hear from you. Mr. Colby?
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Benega, and other commissioners. When a person comes before you, normally you have to make a personal judgment as to whether or not they're giving you credible information and whether they're promoting an ideology or bias, prejudice, whatever. The best example of a person giving you straightforward information would be what Mr. McFarland does when he comes before you, because he used to be straightforward in all of his presentations. I preface that with, I have some comments to make, but I would make two insightful comments relating to what business you have done this morning. I always was of the favor of having the salaries of the county employees be at least 90% to 95% of the private sector, because in the private sector, you don't get, as the county does not get bought out, does not get downsized, does not go bankrupt. And so, if you do your job here, you are assured of a long-term employment, where you could do your job in the private sector, and you are not assured of long-term employment because it can evaporate and can be taken away. And I still like to see you're using the Dave Nelson rule, as you did in effect in number seven. With that aside, I will begin with something that has happened. Commissioner Barth, many years ago, prompted the county commission to pledge allegiance. Most of the time, when people come before you and they do that, we do it as a rote thing. The information that we have, we get from other people. I've prepared some statements that you may find of interest. The Flatware of the Flag pledge has developed legs of its own that it does not deserve. I'm especially amazed that Mr. Hal Wick was such a strong proponent of the Constitution as a person in favor of this pledge. There are at least two reasons he should, and I would expect him to object. First, contrary to the Constitution, in Amendment Number One, he seems to forget that it says, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibit its free exercise thereof," that the phrase "under God" is included, would indicate the United States condones a monotheistic religion. If it said Jehovah or Allah, would Mr. Wick be such an ardent proponent? In this community, we have people who follow various religions from Asia, the subcontinent of India, variety of South American religions, and those from North America, such as the Native American and Latter-day Saints. This pledge, using the word "God," says, "If they don't believe in God, they are second-class citizens and not Americans." Forget what the Constitution says. The second reason for nominating this petition is Mr. Francis Bellamy. By all accounts, he was a possible racist, a bigot, and a socialist at heart. If we adopt the pledge, we're saying, "Well, he wasn't really as bad as Hitler or the KKK or the Uyghur nation." For one, I cannot understand why county commissioners, city councilors, mayors, state legislators, governors, or military personnel get so wrought up with this pledge. Each and every one of them, when sworn in to their position, did not use the Flag pledge. They all swore to uphold and defend the Constitution. I have on occasion shared these thoughts with others, and they have agreed with this position. Therefore, I would offer as a, an alternative, when someone asks me, "Can you do better?" I don't know if I can do better, but I can at least promote something, such that he would say something to this effect. "I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. I believe in the freedom of speech, the freedom of religion, and the right to free assembly. I pledge to support our elected officials as they perform their duties, as they work to make America a great nation. I shall defend this country against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and may the flag of the United States of America long wave over the land of the free and the home of the brave." You could also put in there the, you know, "over the United States" if you chose. There are those that say this pledge will instill a sense of history in our country. This is so short-sighted as to be laughable. Only a study of our nation's history can do that. American history or civil government is not deemed important enough to be part of our curriculum. For this reason, this pledge is shallow. We require a more in-depth study of the US history for those who choose to become citizens of our country. The test they take would be failed by 80 or more percent of the citizens of the United States and high school seniors at that. Now, I can't speak for Jews or Muslims, but I would try for a Christian perspective. I would think that using God and the pledge says, "Slavery in the first hundred years of the United States was sanctified by God, that segregation in the next hundred years was sanctified by God, and that the discrimination experienced by people of color, Jews, Muslims, is today sanctified by God." Does God approve of the way people treated the Native Americans from their landing on the eastern shore through wounded knee and beyond? One nation under God does little for homeless, the poor, undereducated, those with poor health, and this is the most prosperous nation on earth. And seems to us, God is to justify this action. If you are a constitutionalist, a believer in God, a person that detests bigotry or military person who did service in the United States of America's army to perpetuate and protect freedom and justice for all, it seems to me you would not support a pledge of this burious history. The giving of the pledge was once in a time something that the government would impose with the full force of law. The Supreme Court, in a remarkable shift of opinions, ruled 1940 in Myersville School District versus Gobitz, that's the right pronunciation, that states could compel recitation of the pledge. And in 1943, in West Virginia State Board of Education versus Barnett reversed itself and ruled that states could not. Possibly, the best statement was provided by Justice Hugo Black and William O. Douglas concurring in the majority decision in Barnett. Words uttered under coercion are proof of loyalty to nothing but self-interest. Love of country must spring from willing hearts and free minds inspired by a fair administration of wise laws enacted by the people's elected representatives within the bounds of express constitutional prohibition. These laws must be consistent with the First Amendment, permit the widest toleration of conflicting viewpoints, and consist with a society of free men. When I proposed this particular type of pledge, some would say, "This is politically correct." No, it's not politically correct. It is constitutionally correct, and words have meaning. Some say, "Well, it's just a few words." If it wouldn't be words having meaning, you wouldn't sculpt ordinances, and the state's attorney and other people wouldn't have a job. As I understand, you currently are now in a lawsuit dealing with back property taxes. Words have meaning. So, I present this to you to stop and think about, that if we're going to do something, we are not only saying it for ourselves, we're saying it to other people, and we are making a pledge to our country, not to the Constitution. The flag, we've got 500 million people in the United States, and you will have 400 million different interpretations of what the flag is. We have one Constitution. We have Supreme Court judges that deal with what that Constitution says. We fight to protect the Constitution. The flag may be a symbol. We don't pledge to a symbol. We pledge to the Constitution, which is black and white, written, and that we all uphold. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other individuals who have comment that they would like to make about anything that's not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Dan Aseup, and this is the first time that I've been to one of these meetings. And I'm, I didn't have much time to prepare anything, but inspired, I just want to thank you guys, because the first thing that you did was say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I thought that was awesome. I think that's something that's very important, and as the previous speaker just said, I agree that we don't pay tribute, I guess, to the flag. We do to the Constitution. And I also agree with the previous speaker that we do need to learn more about our history of this great country. And to not get into a debate with him on this, but two-thirds of the founding fathers were, had a degree in seminary, and it was a seminary to the Judeo-Christian faith. And so much of our history of this country was because of that Judeo-Christian faith. There was two Muslims that were founding fathers, but as a majority, it is that faith that has founded this country. And I would be opposed to anything to change the Pledge of Allegiance. And to say another thing, it seems like a lot of the things in the media and in the culture and lawsuits and everything comes from the lie of separation of church and state. And for y'all who know history, the whole issue of separation of church and state came from a letter from Thomas Jefferson to the Danbury Baptists, where he was assuring the Danbury Baptists that the government would not take away their religious principles, which is what we're all under so much threat of today in this culture and society. So, people twist that around, people misquote that all the time, saying that it is the, it is the government who has to protect us from religion, but it was the other way around when this country was first founded. So, once again, I appreciate the Pledge of Allegiance and would just remind everyone that what this country was founded on was because of the Judeo-Christian values that it founded in.
Thank you, Dan. Would you do me a favor and spell your last name, so we can get that right for the record, please? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak about anything that was not on the agenda? If not, we'll go to item number 10.
Item 10 under regular business is consider a request to authorize and hire one deputy public advocate position in the 2014 Public Advocate Budget. Cindy Howard.
Cindy, if you're going to go through all those files you just brought up.
No. I have nine o'clock hearings.
Good. Wow.
I updated my statistics.
You need to, I'm sorry, you need to put the microphone in front of you. Thank you.
I don't have much to add to what I said two, I guess, three weeks ago. I updated our statistics. We're over 1,300 files. So, we're looking at a more than 15% increase between last year and this year. I think it'll get up to about a 17% increase. We're just, we're frazzled.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Cindy?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would just say that I'm going to support this request, and I'll make a motion to that effect, and then I'd like to make a comment. I'll make a motion to allow this.
All second. You have a motion and a second?
Everyone in this county, everyone in this county is a victim of crime. Your car may not have been broken into. You may not have been stabbed in a downtown discussion, but every one of us is going to have to pay lots more money to take care of the cost of criminal justice in our community, in our county, whether it's hiring more, more attorneys, or whether it's building a bigger jail. Every one of us is a victim of crime, and I would just implore my fellow citizens to work more and, and try to behave and reduce crime. And let's put, let's put Cindy out of business if we can. But she sure needs the help, and you know, she's not the only one.
Any other comments, Commissioner Pecus?
We deferred this, so Cindy could put some statistics together for the end of the year, for the recap, because she came here actually last month and asked for some sort of relief. And in a, in a perfect world, everything would be absolutely competently budgeted, and we would go ahead and put the new hiring into our budget, and we wouldn't have to go outside. But even today, we had to do a budget supplement. The reality is that we can predict in a crystal ball what we're going to be facing in the future, but the reality is that without us addressing this particular need today, we're facing burnout, and we're facing absolute demoralization. Up at one of our, what I would consider our veteran defense attorney office, which is a public advocate, the way it was originally formed was to just be the overflow from the public defender office. I, I think we should go ahead and extend a helping hand. You know, obviously, do we want to start going to departments outside of the budget process to go ahead and ask for hiring? Of course not. Do we have to do it as an exception basis? We do that on occasion. We've had to do that before. So, I would say that we should support it and note that it's an exception in this particular instance, but please support the attempt on Cindy to try to handle the caseload.
Thank you, John. Any other comments, questions? I will make one. Thank you for bringing the information. Frankly, we asked the public defender, when she's been here before, to bring statistical information and show us the caseload information that we're requesting, and that's why it was deferred. One of the reasons, and the second reason was, is we wanted a better handle on where we were at financially. And we have both that, those answers at this point, so I do appreciate the extra effort and having to come back twice, but I think everybody needs to play by the same set of rules.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Roll call vote.
Sure.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pecus?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Merry Christmas.
And Merry Christmas to you.
Item number 11 is consider the following requests relating to the Minnehaw County Highway Department snow and ice removal policy. Item A is consider adoption of the Minnehaw County Department Snow and Ice Removal Policy. D.J. Boothey.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Last week, we went over a briefing of the snow and ice removal policy and described what our intention was of adopting this policy. And again, just as a summary, is to provide direction to our staff, also to provide information to the public, to the news media, to the school districts, anybody that's interested or has an interest in, in how we operate our snow removal operations. This policy will provide them general information describing how we operate our department during snow removal. And we made a couple very minor changes to the actual policy itself from what we went through last, last week, or I guess it was two weeks ago now. Not significant changes. We have made significant changes to the ordinance that accompanies the policy, but if you have any questions on the specifics of the actual policy itself, which is the item that we're talking about now, I can answer them now. Otherwise, we look for a motion for adopting this policy.
Thank you, D.J. Thank you for your hard work in this. I know it took a long time, and there's a lot of man-hours in this project, so we appreciate the formal policy.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions of D.J.? Any comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion and a second to approve the
Policy.
Policy of snow and ice removal.
Good catch.
Other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
I will make the motion for the first reading to authorize the county auditor to publish notice of hearing regarding the snow and ice removal ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to publish We have a motion and a second to publish the ordinance. Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, John.
Item 12 is consider a motion to declare one 2007 Dodge Durango, tag number 77020, as surplus and authorize the transfer of the asset from the Highway Department to the Equalization Department. Darlene Johnson.
Darlene Johnson, Assistant Auditor. We are requesting that you declare a 2007 Dodge Durango as surplus from the Highway Department and authorize the transfer of that particular vehicle to the Equalization Department. This was one that was missed on a previous action you took in early November.
First of all, welcome back.
Thank you.
We're glad that you're here. Anyone have any questions of Darlene? Do we have a motion?
Move the Durango.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the Durango. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes four to zero and one abstention, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is consider a bid award for a mobile morgue trailer for mass fatality events. The bids were opened on December 4th, 2013.
Good morning, Dr. Snell.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm here in place of Lynn, Lynn's at a mass fatality training course today. We received our bids for the mass fatality mobile morgue that we were looking to build and as you can see, we had a good range from below the $50,000 grant that we had to as high as $96,000. After review of all of the grants, we would like to award the bid to Rosenbauer Firefighting Technology to build the mobile morgue.
Any other questions?
Just, just a comment that there were four bidders on this and I just think it's nice to see that Rosenbauer, which is a Minnehaw County entity, received the bid. They were the lowest bidder, so okay, it's a Minnehaw County.
Good point. Any other comments?
I'd like to say that, but the last time I did, I guess.
There were four bidders.
You have a good memory. Any other questions of Dr. Snell? Is there a motion?
It's all moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid for, I just lost the price.
Mobile morgue.
Forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars to Rosen.
Bauer.
I lost the whole file.
Rosenbauer. Rosenbauer.
Sorry. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes four to zero, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 agreement between Southeastern Council of Governments and Minnehaw County for accomplishing the Sioux Falls area transportation planning process. Ken McFarland.
Good morning Commissioners. This is an annual item that you take a look at, at the end of each year and that, and this is the agreement with CCOG to have them conduct the transportation planning process on behalf of the county. Under the terms of this agreement, and that this makes $95,000 in, in federal highway administration funds available for reimbursement, both to the County Highway Department and our Planning Department, and that, for approved transportation planning activities that are outlined in the unified work plan that's attached to this particular agreement. Last year, there were $60,643 available in those federal funds to help do that work and this year, there's $95,000 in federal highway funds to, to offset some of the costs. It does require a local match and it's basically in staff time of $17,148 to access those funds. So we would ask that you authorize the chairman to sign this agreement.
Questions of Ken?
I'll make the motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with CCOG. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes four to zero with one abstention.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign the overhang electric easement across county property at 908 Northwest Avenue, Sioux Falls, between Minnehaw County and Northern States Power Company. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we own the property at 908 Northwest Avenue and, excuse me, Northwest, Northern States Power is doing some work in that area where they're upgrading some electric transmission lines and part of that upgrade will mean that part of their electric lines look like they will overhang our property along the north edge of our property at 908 Northwest for those, that's the VOA property and our shelter care facility and that, and Northern States is, is asking that we approve this attached easement to allow their electrical lines to hang, they, they're anticipating 10 feet over, they're requesting a 10 feet, 10-foot easement over our property to accommodate those, those lines as part of their upgrade.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Ken, they must already have an easement for existing things there, right?
Yes, but like I said, from what I understand in the project that they're doing, the upgrades are gonna extend that over our property further and that's why they're specifically requesting this easement. And we don't have, I can't find another easement on this property at all, but that's the reason for their request.
So are we getting anything in exchange for this easement?
We are not.
Will it affect our insurance at all?
It should not, I haven't heard anything that indicates that it would, unless you can share something with me that I don't know about, because you look like you've got something.
No, I, I just worry that, you know, electrical wires hanging over me, sort of Damocles.
I think it's over a parking lot, isn't it?
It actually, it's, it would be, there's not even a sidewalk there along that location that would hang over bare property.
Okay. That's great.
Okay. Any other questions of Ken? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the electrical easement at 908 Northwest. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item number 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 Coroner/Medical Examiner Agreement between Minnehaw County, Dr. Kenneth Snell and Sanford Health Pathology Clinic. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this was, this is another agreement that we do annually and this was one that we should have had on the agenda last week, because I think Commissioner Bennigan has already signed off on it in the stack, but we don't have an official action on this agreement and that's why we're bringing it to you right now. This is, this is the annual coroner agreement and medical examiner agreement with Dr. Snell and Sanford Health Pathology. Under the terms of this agreement, the, Dr. Snell through, through Sanford Health Pathology will still continue to receive, and this is the same amount as it was last year, $6,000 per month for coroner duties and that, and of course, he uses that income to also offset some of the costs with the deputy coroners over at Sanford. The medical examiner portion of the contract, as we discussed during the budget hearing, they will, he will receive $16,806 per month, which is up from $16,250 per month in 2013 as the flat fee for medical examiner services from Minnehaw County. And in exchange for this, he will not charge us, we will not be charged on a per autopsy basis. This has been an arrangement that has worked very well for us for the last few years and that the lab fees, ambulance transports and the monthly cellphone, that is also paid out of the 2013 budget and those are estimated at $59,025 a year. And that the coroner budget for 2014 is $332,700 and incorporates all of the provisions of this particular contract. And just for comparison purposes, the 2013 coroner budget was at $326,000. So as we discussed at budget hearing, this 2014 contract does, does cover everything that was discussed and the increase that we allowed for, for 2014 during the budget.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone have any questions?
Move to authorize the chairman to sign that agreement.
Second.
Authorize it again?
Yes, sir.
Really authorized.
Well, when you don't have a clerk of court here for a week, look what happens. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item number 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 Rural Ambulance Quality Assurance Contract between Dr. Jeff Luther and Minnehaw County. This was deferred from December 10th, 2013. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, excuse me, again, this was an agreement that we brought to you last week and it was deferred till today. This is the Quality Assurance Contract with Dr. Luther for his services as Quality Assurance Director for the Rural Ambulance Service. Under the terms of this agreement, Dr. Luther will perform all the duties as required by our ordinance and that are enumerated in Appendix A of this agreement for a sum of $30,000, which is payable in 12 equal monthly installments. One of the requirements of the contract is a review of the runs and, by Dr. Luther and you will notice at the end, on your drop box, at the end of this, at the end of the contract, he has given you a summary of his 2013 county ambulance oversight report. Dr. Luther is here if you have some questions or concerning the report and that, but again, we wanted to provide you this information prior to your consideration of the contract and again, Dr. Luther is here if you'd like him to go through the report.
Thank you, Ken. Dr. Luther, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you Commissioners. I summarized in this, Jeff Luther, the Quality Assurance Director, I had summarized what I've got for the year-end report for you. The methods that I used to review these were per the ordinance, the call types, the nature of those calls that are required to be reviewed. If you have my summary, I have a kind of a detail, just, it's a bit busy, but I receive a monthly report from 911 Dispatch that gives me all of the calls in the county and within that, there are several elements that I use to form the report. The calls that are required to be reviewed by the ordinance include trauma calls, cardiac calls, cardiac arrests, pediatric, and you can see, I can identify the nature of those. The reason that I started doing it this way is that often there's a delay in getting the trip, reports and run reports from the ambulance services and I, I call and reach out and tickle as best I possibly can, but this time of year, I called for some reports and the response was, hold on a second, Dr. Luther, I'm drying beans. So the people that submit those reports are busy in the spring and then with planning and whatnot because of the rural nature. Nonetheless, I'm able to capture those calls that are the low-volume, high-intensity calls such as your pediatric cardiac arrests and trauma. As soon as I get those in, I can review those and the performance indicators that I use are at the BLS level and I think the commission needs to understand that, that there are now, the provision of care in the county includes ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, as well as basic life support, but my task has always been to review the BLS portion of this. Well, because now there's staffing part-time with ALS individuals, a lot of these calls are ALS in nature. So again, I, I emphasize that I just review the BLS performance indicators and those are listed in my summary, but also on the second to the last page, I detailed those and they include all, but not inclusive of times to respond, transport time, the important things with respect to the care given, I look at vitals, make sure vitals are appropriate, that the patient is assessed appropriately per BLS protocol, that in trauma, that the spinal is immobilized appropriately, fractures are splinted, bleeding is controlled, oxygen therapy is applied when indicated. And in all of those, the run reports that I get from Del Rapids are a little different than they are from Jasper, but nonetheless, all of these elements are in there and I can discern accuracy and quality by reviewing each one of those when I get them. I'm very comfortable in saying that all of those standards have been met with a good deal of accuracy. Sometimes I'll see the vital signs are, they may have the, the bottom blood pressure listed over the top and respiratory rates of, in the hundreds and all of that usually ends up being a documentation process that I can clarify easily. I also think that the commission can also be confident in the fact that we have several safety nets, if you will, in quality assurance to make sure that the provision is there. I rely heavily on the destination. If there's a problem, I'm gonna hear from that, from the ER docs and frequently I will, occasionally I will reach out to the ED managers to see if anybody has any concerns with anything. And again, all of those low-volume, high-intensity calls are reviewed, again, your cardiac arrest calls. Now, the way the provision is, a lot of those calls have changed into ALS criteria and I do not have any way of doing skills validation for intubation success rates, IV success rates, medication administration routes and dosages. I, I look at those, but I don't report on those for quality assurance purposes. So again, I, in summary, I think that all of the calls that I've gotten to date, there are some calls still pending for the month of November and December, but I think it's safe to say that on average through the year, that they continue to do a good job at that basic life support level.
Thank you, Dr. Luther. Questions?
I don't know if you'll know the answer to the question, but do you know, are the volunteers getting yearly certification in ALS skills?
Not, not ALS. They do with their, their BLS and I do primary verification on the, at the time of license renewer, renewal for the, the district. Part of that requirement is that they list all of their personnel. That's really the only way I can do primary verification. I don't really have a way because there is some attrition through the, the volunteer community and who's on the fire department, who's in the ambulance service, but they have to list those at the time of the primary service area license renewal process. Then I have current copies of their license and whatever training that they've done in that period of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Two questions, if I may. One on your, does ALS require paramedic?
Yes. There's, there's paramedic, which is a more intense skillset and training level. We have EMTIs, which is intermediate, we have a few of those out there. Those individuals can start IVs and administer medications.
But only the paramedic can do the incubation?
That's correct.
Okay. The other question is, there seems to be some discrepancy on what the ambulance services see this as. We got the indication, and I hope you'll help me on this a little bit, that, that they weren't submitting reports, that nobody was asking for them and, am I correct here, Jeff, in the way I'm asking that question? You know, you say you try and reach out to them and, and I guess, I'm just trying to find the disparity between what they've told us and what you're telling us you're really doing and, Jeff, can you add to that a little, maybe not clear in what I'm saying?
Jeff or Jeff?
Are you looking for Dr. Luther?
I'm sorry, Jeff, Barth. I'm sorry.
Doctor, yes, I, the ambulance services have kind of felt that they were wandering a bit during the year, waiting for your contact from you and, and having information that they needed to get to you. Have you had any indication from them about that at all or?
Yeah, just this week, I reached out to two of those services and I left a message with one and the other one I contacted was the individual that was out drying the beans. I don't know anywhere where it's my responsibility to make sure that they send these reports. If you look at the ordinance, they're supposed to submit these.
Their duty.
And so I, I have to rely on that. If anything, I, you know, and again, this, this report that I have is on those cases that have been reviewed and there are run reports that I have not received from some of these services. And if anything, I think we need to have some kind of a mechanism whereby they are, I guess, stimulated somehow to submit those. Because if we look at the number of calls, they're sometimes pretty small. You have more trauma calls, obviously, in the, in the summer months and then that drops off more in the, in the off-season where your medical calls will increase. So if there was a mechanism where they're required, and I'm open to anything as far as getting those reports sent to me, but the, it's, each year, we go through this where I have to call and remind and they'll drop them off individually or they'll send them to me in the mail. And I was told after I made my last contact, which would have been Wednesday last week, that they would have reports for me before this, this meeting.
Commissioner Pecos?
Well, Dr. Luther, you're getting the data, though. I, I've seen you at all the Metro Council meetings. You obviously go to those and that's where you get a lot of your data. You obviously go to those, and that's where you get a lot of your data. Obviously, you're in communication. Are you involved with REMSA as well?
Yes.
And so clearly, we want to compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges. So you're pulling the same data that REMSA is obviously getting as well.
That's correct. And some of these in the county will be mutual aid calls, or there'll be ALS intercepts. Now that these services have paramedics in their employ, we're seeing less and less of that, meaning it would start out as a basic life support call from Humboldt or Garrettson. And if it's in one of these low-intensity, high, or low-volume, high-intensity calls, cardiac arrest from or whatever, I would be able to review everything because it's an ALS intercept.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, what you brought up, then, I mean, I don't think it's your responsibility either. I think it's their responsibility to get the reports in. It sounds to me like they are not filing a report, and nobody's harassing them too much, so they just, you know, they aren't getting their hands slapped, so they're just not, next month, they don't do it. We're going to be renewing these contracts, I believe, shortly. I think it would be of interest to the commission to know who specifically is and isn't getting the reports in, or is somebody getting the reports in maybe half the time and not. It's not right that you don't have the ability to review all calls, or, I mean, to random from all calls and not just a part of them. So I, if we have to do it, I don't know, we can make it, I mean, we give them a hundred and whatever it is, a thousand dollars a year. If they're not going to perform what they're supposed to do as part of that deal, then I think we might have to look at their funding levels.
Well, I keep, I'm sorry, I keep record of all of those that are sent to me, so I have those off. Because there is some information there that's sensitive with respect to HIPAA and those sorts of things, so those that are sent to me are reviewed, and I file those away, so I know what services are lacking. When I call, sometimes it takes a little bit of effort to get that.
But you shouldn't have to make that call.
Well, that is a bit of an issue, and I think to, in defense of these services, I don't know if they really know how many and who is responsible for sending that information. In my experience, it's been sometimes a mix of individuals that claim responsibility for sending those reports, and that, again, changes through regular attrition or whoever.
Well, but that's their problem. I mean, they have to determine, but somehow, we have to ensure that you are getting all the reports.
Thank you. That's true.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm looking for it, but I think one of the provisions we added last year was that Dr. Luther would give us a quarterly report, and so maybe those reports have been going to Ken.
Actually, no, this is the only report that I've done. I've compiled all of the data. I've gotten, if we look from January through March of last year, I was still getting some 2012 reports, so that's kind of the behind. Starting in July is when I would get the report from nine-one-one dispatch, so I can look at the nature of those calls, and if there's a problem, I can pull those immediately. So I think that you have that assurance that those calls are ran efficiently and effectively, because if there looks like there's a problem, I'll either call the medical director, or I'll call the destination where they ended up. I'll talk to the ER doctor at Sanford, or at Avera, or at the heart hospital. But the, I think for time economy, and there's just not much difference in those reports that I think would be of value to the commission quarterly, even though I said I would do that, I can. That's not a problem. But, you know, often, I'm still waiting in that second quarter for first-quarter reports.
Okay. I think it might still be in there, maybe Ken can just, did you want to address that, Ken, or do you want to just look at it later?
Well, I'll.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Dr. Luther? Commissioner Marv?
Dr. Luther, I'm appreciative of the fact that, you know, you're getting those things in late. I think you should gig him on that, if that's the case. And, you know, I know in the past, it's been six years ago or so, but one of the services was slow to respond to calls, and they actually were under a microscope for a while based on their lack of response time. And, you know, that's the kind of stuff I want to see happen, known as perfect, and I don't expect them to all be perfect. But it does seem to me that, you know, there has been a lack of reporting to this body. I mean, you know, we get to see you when it's time to sign a contract for thirty thousand dollars, and that's certainly a lot of money to this county. It would be nice if we got a little more action that way. And I guess a question I would have is, do you interact with the ambulance services quality director people at all? I mean, they each have their own doctor, medical director, whatever. Do you have any interaction with them, and any questions that come up where the policy or the procedure that an ambulance is using may not be the standard we want?
That's a good question, and the answer is yes and no directly when there is an issue. And again, there's only been four of those where I've seen an issue, where I would reach out. Again, the end safety net, which I know I can rely on for the best outcome, and the care that was provided, is at the destination. I'll call up Dr. Garrett Taylor, or Arlis Thompson, or McCherry from Sanford, any of those, or I'll get direction from the ED managers to follow for the care. With respect to what changes in the field based on best practice standards, my review of the ALS world through REMSA, we change those guidelines annually, and some of those impact the BLS services, particularly your fire and rescue services are at the BLS level. What we've recently done in 2013 is changed our spinal immobilization policy in how we immobilize spines in trauma, and that impacts at the BLS level. Also, airway management at the BLS level, we've changed direction on what type of rescue airway that we use. Through that review, people from Rome Metro Ambulance and Sioux Falls Fire and Rescue in our meetings have indicated they'll get that information out to all of these services, who they have regular contact with. So I don't contact the ambulance director, the medical director I will if there's an issue with the care being provided, but in terms of going forward and evolving our care through standards, that information I use through the users group to disseminate those changes.
One more question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So from your perspective, the citizens of Minnehaha County don't need to worry, our ambulances are pretty much up to standard from the reviews you've been able to do.
That's correct. All of those that I've set in those performance indicators, and there is some overlap because I can't help but look at the ALS things, even though I don't control that portion. And again, open to any suggestions, I have my own suggestions how we should do it, but, you know, how do you put a price on quality assurance? And then, you know, we have to measure, usually, we measure the same things, but how we do it sometimes is different. And, but I think that looking at what we got, the quality is there. Also, I guess remember that I review superficially, I would say, is our sheriff's office now has EMT basics, too, that are on the first response. And I think that was implemented as a, in response to some of the shortfalls that we had in the county with respect to ambulance personnel, and that's been remarkable. I mean, you can have an EMT basic rubber on the road who can respond from Brandon area to Garrettson quicker than their primary service ambulances, because they're already on the road, so they can initiate the initial assessments.
Commissioner Pecus?
There seems to be some confusion, and I want to make sure that the public that are watching today, they understand, the key isn't having an ambulance roll into the farmyard, the key is getting a first responder there, correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Kelly?
Just a question, you review all of them, but you review them on BLS standards and not ALS, is that what you're saying? Or do you not look at the ALS calls, if you can identify it as well?
Again, to answer the question as directly as I can, is the calls via my contract have been historically basic life support. Those performance indicators that I have listed on the second to the last page, those are all in the BLS arena. And I think we have to realize, too, that just because it's BLS, the first ninety seconds of patient assessment is critical. You can have all of the equipment in the world, but you still have to do primary assessments, we have to stop the bleeding, immobilize the spine, open airways, those sorts of things. And once the advanced life support person is there, then they start their advanced techniques and procedures and administering medications and performing procedures that are not in the skill set at the BLS level. So to answer the question, I look at those, but I don't report on those. When I do quality assurance for REMSA, for example, those are all looked at in detail.
But Rome Metro is required to have ALS, right?
That's correct, and remember that REMSA is within the city limits. Now, Rome Metro Ambulance does have a primary service area in the county, and I review those calls. And I review them, that's amalgamated because they don't have BLS, Rome Metro, as does MedStar. They don't have BLS. But they still have to first focus on BLS procedures before they can do any of the other advanced interventions.
ABCs.
Exactly.
Any other questions for Dr. Luther?
I'm going to make a motion to authorize the quality assurance contract.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the quality assurance contract with Dr. Luther. Any other questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Mr. Doc. I wasn't fast enough with my voice there, but I was, yes.
See, Jeff.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner liaison reports.
Any liaison reports for this afternoon, or morning, I guess it is? Still, yes, just seemed like afternoon. No liaison reports with that. Any new business? Mr. Chair? Kyle, do you have some comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle House, South Director of Vehicleization. As a follow-up to the reminder that I sent out last week, our office, in trying to give the taxpayer the biggest bang for the buck, will be initiating some new procedures starting January first. We have six-hundred-and-fifty-one mobile homes in Minnehaha County that are older than nineteen-seventy-six, and on average, they pay fifty-two dollars a year in taxes. That's less than a nineteen-seventy-six Chevy Impala pays. It causes all six-hundred-and-fifty-one people to come down to our office in January, not the most pleasurable time of the year to make a trip to the county courthouse, to sign their forms, to pay their taxes. What we are going to offer them is, they'll do it this last year, we'll put them on real estate, they will actually get the year 2015 as a free year. They will not have to pay those taxes then, because they'll be treated as real estate. This will not cost the county, school districts, or anything, any additional monies, because all monies received from these mobile homes are unanticipated revenue and are not part of the budgetary process. They're like fines to go to schools. It's just trying to give the taxpayer the biggest bang for the buck and not to drag them down here in January. That was the biggest complaint we had. Pick another month. So I guess more, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. And my assumption is that all of those six-hundred-and-fifty-one people will be contacted by mail?
Yes, when they either come down here to apply, or if they're doing it en masse. One other thing, I guess we're adding to it, we're trying something new this year. We have converted our forms for this process over to four major other languages, Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, and I think Arabic. And we will be able to offer all of the forms in up to twenty-eight different languages as we speak now, so we'll try to take care of those people, too.
Questions for Kyle?
I just would say, a couple of years ago, I had contact with a woman whose property tax was forty-two dollars on her mobile home, and she was having trouble paying it. I went out there, and she didn't have running water. Her landlord was letting her keep her trailer on the place for nothing. She was using water next door, et cetera, and we're trying to get forty-two bucks for her. It's, it can be pretty dismal.
Questions, other questions or comments? Kyle, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wonder if Dick wanted to comment on the SDACC meeting that he attended.
I left my notebook up there, I know that. I had to call a guy, and he almost said, oh, you've got a book of mine. We discussed a little bit about the upcoming legislative stuff, and I guess I tried to talk one-on-one to a lot of them about, you know, this public safety costs and what they're facing. You know, we're not unusual at over fifty percent. A good number of these counties are running in that same problem. Obviously, not the dollar numbers of us, but they're, you know, of their budget, sheriff and jail costs, and public defenders and public advocates and state attorney are costing them. So the problem is basically statewide. Where we have the advantage, obviously, is that our highway funds, we're probably the only department in the state that self-funds its highway department. Other than that, there wasn't, I can't think of anything offhand, and I should have taken notes or more notes. They're here in our clause.
Any other new business items? Any old business? Commissioner Pecus?
Well, I was reading in the State Bar newsletter that apparently the South Dakota Supreme Court is proposing a judicial rule allowing them to give probationary credit for time served under SB seventy. They're just now proposing that rule. I know it's been in effect for over six months, but the Supreme Court's finally getting around to proposing a rule to allow circuit judges to take that into account. So my assumption is, up to this point, they haven't been taking that into account, despite what we were told.
Okay. Any other old business? The only thing that I would bring up, and it'll bring this conversation at some point before the end of the year, is that if you look at our cash flow balances, if you will, which have been generally positive because of department support and frankly, some refinancing of some issues and bonds that we've done, we have a little bit more cash than we've had in the past, but we're faced with some significant capital issues in the next few years. I think we need to address frankly, the capital reserve account before we close out December and 2013. And Ken and Robert, I'd like you to consider looking into that and have a suggestion on what that might be, because frankly, with what we see coming down the road in buildings and enhancements and jails and work release and CCS or whatever happens that gets approved, we're going to need some capital support to get those processes started, and I think it's time to plan for that right now. So if you would do that for us, I would appreciate it. Your hair will be a little grayer.
At least he's got it.
I resemble that, Raymar. Any other old business? If not, we need to go into exec session for personnel, legal, and litigation.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion and a second to go into exec for personnel, legal, and litigation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.